All right, I'll be ready this time.
(laughing).
Well, in that case, you'll be a step ahead. I'd like to call this meeting of the Clay County Commission to order. We will begin with our invocation. This evening's invocation will be from Tina Freestone. So if you'd like to come forward, please.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me this time to give the invocation. As Commissioner Nolte stated, my name is Tina Freestone and I am the president of the youth group for the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. Our dear Heavenly Father, we come to Thee this evening in prayer and ask Heavenly Father for a special blessing to be upon this board. We're grateful Heavenly Father for their time and their commitment to serve these great citizens of our community. We're grateful Heavenly Father for those who serve our country. We're grateful, Father, for the sacrifice that they've made. And we ask that Thou would please bless them and their families. We're grateful Heavenly Father for this time here together to meet and pray for Thy Spirit to be upon the board, that they would be guided and directed as Thou would have them lead Thy children. We're especially grateful, Father, for Thy Son, Jesus Christ, and we say these things humbly in the sacred name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte?
Here.
Commissioner Withington?
Here.
Commissioner Lawson?
Here.
Commissioner Wagner?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson?
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Here.
Thank you. That brings us to the approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting. Is there a motion on the approval of the agenda? Commissioner Johnson?
I move to approve tonight's agenda as written.
Motion's been made for the approval of this evening's agenda as written. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Hi.
Motion passes six zero.
Next on our agenda are public comments. Are there any members of the public wishing to comment on any issues not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none, that brings us to our consent agenda. Administrator?
The consent agenda allows the commission to act upon items considered to be routine and approved in one motion. These may include items that have been reviewed by the commission in a prior session. There will be no separate discussion unless a commissioner requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. There are four items on the consent agenda this evening. Resolution 2024-101 approving a request for the use of county grounds and a revocable event license for the historic Downtown Liberty for the 2024 Downtown Farmer's Market. Resolution 2024-102 is approving a revocable event license with Smithville High School Booster Club for their eighth annual 5K walk. Resolution 2024-103, which is approving the revocable event licenses for the annual Lilly's War Event fireworks display and King's Company archery event in the park. And resolution 2024-104 is approving the revocable event license for the Narcotics Anonymous Smithville Campout Committee annual camping weekend at Smithville Lake.
Thank you. Is there a motion related to this evening's consent agenda? Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Motion's been moved for the approval of the consent agenda for this evening. Is there, are there any comments? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Hi.
Motion passes six zero.
That brings us to our regular agenda. First item on this evening's regular agenda is 2024-50. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-50 is a request for a waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes due to a county error by Michael Valentine. Mr. Valentine is not able to join us, but he will be here in the room. He is going to be available on phone. So if you bear with us just a moment, staff will be coming out and dialing Mr. Valentine on the phone.
Thank you. Mr. Valentine, this is Jerry Nolte. I'm the Presiding Commissioner of Clay County, and we are ready to take up your request for a waiver of fees and penalties. The commission has convened and we have the packet up before us on our computers. So if you would like to make any statements and kind of lay out your case, so we certainly would be happy to hear it.
Hi, my name is Stephanie. I'm my wife. And I'm pleased to know that you have copies of the paperwork you've done with our request.
Yes, we do.
Oh, thank you. I'm sorry, we're getting out of the place. We got to lay in, unfortunately. I had a little illness. And the ones that we were trying to put you by the door, you couldn't be helped. And then we were told that we could do this by phone. So that's very much appreciate that. And that hurt a bit to us.
Yes, ma'am.
So basically, what happened is we lived in this county for over four years, always been affected, never been laid, been through it. What happened was, is that my husband went online, get taxes, and did it according to what the instructions were. And we got sent the receipt through the tax KOC that said it was amount to pay. And then halfway down, they told me they don't miss receipt on both ways, it's a personal property. And riddled with taxes. So we did not know that something was, I can tell we got a letter sent to us from county to another. Unfortunately, it was sent out from Purdue on January 4th. We never got it to our mailbox until January 23rd. So, you know, we had some issues with our mail in the past, and I know that everybody about the mail department that we saw that and we needed to take action. And my husband was investigating, found out what had happened. We have been with Bank of America forever. Time to find out, they changed routing numbers. If you went online to pay something, but they did not send that information to their customers. You know, internet banking or any kind of flash, which a lot of banks do where they change something. So people do see those changes and don't have a problem like we did with this. So once we figured out what happened, we immediately went to the courthouse, and that's today, and that was on the 29th, I believe. Yes. And explained what happened, and they told us that, you know, fill in to pay the penalty. But we did maybe talk to the commission and see if they might help us out on that. We did go to Bank of America, that they can ask if they would give us money in writing, stating that they changed the routing numbers for certain types of payments, but they didn't alert their customers. And what they, they inclined to do that, is, you know, they're just, Bank of America kind of hard work with it, they're never in there if we're not understanding that. So we were not trying to be remiss in not paying our taxes or trying to, we're not here to get extra time, because, you know, something that was beyond our control, that we, we stood waiting about them, and that's when I had, you know, create evidence, we got the letter from Clay County, unfortunately three weeks later. And then we took care of it by law.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions of the taxpayer? I'm looking around and I see no questions. The way we will proceed, ma'am, is we will now hear from the staff, and they will give us their part in this. We will then see if there are any questions. We will have discussion, and I will come back to you for closing remarks on your appeal. So unless there are questions, does staff have any comments to make? Commissioner Johnson?
Hi, Mrs. Valentine. My name is Jay Johnson. I'm a commissioner. Can you hear me okay?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Can you hear me okay? This is Jay Johnson, one of the commissioners.
Yeah, I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, so question I have for you regarding your routing number. Are you familiar with Bank of America? There's actually three different routing numbers to choose from?
We did not know that, because they never alerted us of that.
So that's a common problem.
There's other accounts, and, you know, the routing number and the account number's on the bottom of the check, and there's not multiple routing numbers.
Yeah, so the bottom of the check would have the correct routing number for that, for that check. So when it comes to routing numbers, there's different routing numbers depending on what you're trying to do, whether it's a wire transfer, or it's a, you know, a direct deposit or whatever. There's three different options to choose from, because I went through the same thing, also with Bank of America. And so it's, I'm just wondering if maybe you guys put the wrong routing number, a correct routing number, but the wrong routing number, and others for a different type of...
Yeah, we used the routing number that we all used since we got banked with them.
So you didn't have to type the routing number in again?
When you, well, my husband did that E-check, you know, went on the website for Clay County to pay it.
Yeah.
You know, just used our regular routing number that we used for everything else. And we also got back, you know, receipts stating that they had received the money.
And where did you get the routing number from?
The bottom of our check.
Oh, okay. You did get it from the bottom of your check?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. So there's routing numbers for paper and electronic transfers, and there's a different routing number for wire transfers, and there's a different routing number for actually ordering new checks, believe it or not. Yeah, so I just wondered if that was one of the mistakes. So one of the other issues is, for the county, for us to, I guess I should have backed up and first say thank you for being a taxpayer and for paying your taxes on time for these many years. We appreciate that, and we're all sorry that you're going through this. However, the state law requires that for us to reimburse you for these penalties or fees, we have to find fault on the county, that we did something wrong. Not that your bank did something wrong, or that there's an accident, or it sounds like an honest mistake here somewhere along the way. But for us to do it, to refund it, we have to find that we did something wrong here at the county level. It sounds like there's an issue with the routing numbers that weren't correct or were changed or whatever, which I totally feel for you on that. But I don't know that we can, we can say that that is a county, a fault of the county in any way, which may...
All right. I guess I didn't understand it had to be a county fault, or it was an honest mistake that was made.
You're right.
Kind of hope is that, you know, we might get a pay on that.
I tell you what, ma'am, if we could, if we can reimburse you for honest mistakes were made, we would reimburse you immediately, because this happens a lot. A lot of good people that pay their taxes on time make honest mistakes. I've done it myself, but unfortunately, we're bound by state law that we don't control, that won't allow us to reimburse you for that. So that may be the issue here. I'll let my other colleagues, if anybody has anything to chime in, but that could be the issue with this case, that we don't have a legal justification that we can reimburse you on this. But I'll, I'll just share that with you, and anybody else that's in the audience that has the same issue, I think we have a couple more on the agenda. We have to be able to say that the county made a mistake on this, even though it might have been an honest mistake by somebody else or a bank mistake, if the county didn't make the mistake, then it's, the state law kind of bounds us by not allowing us to reimburse those, those fees and penalties. And I got my, the attorney's here too, and I think he would confirm that. He's shaking his head, but that's correct. So anyways, that's all I have to say. If there's anybody else.
Are there any other commissioners wishing to make a comment or ask a question of the taxpayer? Okay, I see none at this moment, but we'll certainly, if anyone does come up with a question or comment, we'll certainly recognize them. Was there any comment from staff at this point? No? Okay. That being the case, ma'am, if you'd just like to go ahead, unless there's a further comment or question, if you would like to kind of sum up your, your appeal, we will go ahead and then make a motion and enact upon that.
I understand your comments, and I respect the laws and things like that. Like I said, this wasn't, it was delivered time, and we were trying to not pay, we had to run time, trying to get something for nothing, definitely wouldn't do that. But we were kind of hoping that, you know, maybe the county could help us out on this one time, but then we're asking again, that's for sure. But we learned now that we have to be, you know, really investigate things before we get out there online and do things, and just not do it online, kind of personally pay it.
By the way, and I, go ahead, please, go ahead, sir.
May I have your question?
Absolutely. Please go ahead.
Yes. What is, when county, and I know a lot of our county do too, when you pay online, it gives you a printable receipt that it's paid.
I'm saying...
Do you have a third thing or anything else? The answer I got from the clerk was that when you go in, they take your tax receipt in to do your license, renew your license, and they look online to see if it's, that paid. Very seldom do I get a receipt that something's been paid, but it's not actually been paid for.
I believe there's a disclaimer on those receipts. If one, if somebody from staff would like to be more specific about that, more responsive to that, that would be helpful. And please identify yourself for the... Yeah, I know, but I want to go to source. Please identify yourself before speaking.
Barbara O'Reilly, Collector. I believe on the statements, it says that this is an attempt for a receipt and that the payment has to be processed and cleared for funds to be available for us. It is an attempt to pay?
Sure, I'm looking at it, I see it on the tax paper.
It's towards the middle of the page. It says, "Failure for the payment to clear. Your financial institution will void this receipt."
Yes, okay.
And there will be fees added, penalties.
Have we got a double bottom receipt there?
Yes.
So that's why we got the letter. Because the payment didn't go through correctly.
Yes, ma'am. And it takes several days, as you can tell, for this to process by the time it goes to the bank and comes back to us.
Well, a little upset that we couldn't offer time, get three days out of the past. You know, we got the doc, they didn't want to count it. So, well, I guess there's nothing we can do about that. I do appreciate you all taking time to listen to what we had to say and how we felt about that, wish it was better out than yours, so.
Very well. Is there a motion on 2024-50? Commissioner Johnson?
Yes. Mr. and Mrs. Valentine, first of all, I apologize that we have to do this, but, and I feel for what you're going through, but unfortunately, the state law, we're kind of bound by this. So I'm going to make the motion to approve 2024-50 with the box marked denied.
Motion's been made for 2024-50 to be approved with a box marked denied indicated. Any further discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Hi.
Motion passes six zero.
I'm sorry we couldn't be of more service to you, but thank you very much for taking the time to come before us and to make your case. We appreciate your time.
And one last comment I would like to make.
Sure, go right ahead.
We had a couple of employees there at the courthouse, Janice and Brandy, and they were so helpful and so kind during this process, trying to figure out what to do, you know, made it quick, and being in a hospital, they were very accommodating and kept being supportive of what we're trying to do. So once you know you have good employees...
Well, we certainly appreciate the kind words, and, and you're pointing that out, because many times, our employees do not get the kind of compliments that you gave. So certainly, those are appreciated and will be passed on.
That would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, we will move on to our next issue. That would be 2024-99. Administrator?
Resolution 2024-99 is a request for waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes due to county error from the applicant being GGCC LLC. The applicant also is not available to be with us in the building this evening, so they will also be dialing in. So again, we ask your indulgence as we make arrangements to connect with them over the phone.
We will stand down for a moment. Yes, Commissioner Johnson, if you would like, in the interim, if you'd like to make a comment, please proceed.
I'd just like to comment on that, on that last comment that was made by our last caller. That's starting to be an underlying theme that we're hearing from people that call in, is, or that come before us for these waivers, is they end with, "Thank you for the service that I was provided by the staff that I dealt with at the front desk." I got to tell you, that really makes me happy. That, that's the kind of thing I love to hear, that people that don't win, that don't get their way, that have to pay penalties and fees, they still say, "Hey, thank you for the great service." That's, that's called creating raving fans with every contact, and I love that. And so I just want to say thank you to the staff, and if you guys could pass that on to your staff that work the front desk. Working a front desk and dealing with people is tough. And to have that kind of response from people that are paying penalties and fees, that is, that is quite an accolade. So I just want to say thank you so much for that, and please pass that along to your staff. I appreciate it.
Hi, this is Jerry Nolte, Presiding Commissioner of Clay County. We are calling in regards to your request for a waiver of fees and interest. We are currently convening our meeting, and we would like to proceed, if you're ready, to hear your appeal.
Yes, I'm ready. Thank you so much for the phone call.
Now, as you are on speakerphone, if you could identify yourself with the record, and then what we'd like to do, the way we will go forward on this is, go ahead and make your, make your case for the, the waiver of interest and penalties. And then we will ask questions, if any, and then we will hear from staff, and then we will follow up with more questions. And then at the end of that discussion, we will render a decision most likely. So if you'd like to proceed, please do so.
Yes, thank you very much. Just making sure that everyone can hear me okay?
I believe so. Do I have head nods all around? Yes, you are coming through clearly. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also really appreciate the speed to have me be able to attend. I would have attended in person if I had a little more notice, but again, very grateful for the quick response to this. My name is Mark Reesman, that's R-E-I-S-M-A-N, and I'm the asset manager for GGCC LLC, which is a very good name, and the Grand Royal, which is an independent building, and just a building, and still nursing facility in Glaxum. And this community has been around for a long time, but then it sat vacant, and the new owners came in, they renovated and turned it into what it is today. I have been asset manager for this for the last two and a half years, and we have seen it go from life moving to now basically stabilized to driving to... In addition to be asset management, it is also my team that does the accounting for this and in charge of the account table. And this is something that was paid late, not because of the community, it was paid late because ultimately, you know, my team did not take the pain enough time. There were some staggering circumstances that, more than you can imagine all, it may get done, but I really was hoping that the community wouldn't get punished for something that, you know, ultimately is something that I controlled. Part of the reason is, we were waiting for a payment from Medicare, not usually coming in about a week before the end of the month. With Christmas, it did not arrive until the last Christmas day of the month, which was December 29th. And our payment did not let it become available until the first Christmas day of January, which was January 2nd. We could have written a check and dropped it from there on December 29th or 30th, but it did not. Part of that was due to my, my controller was traveling that week, and we didn't have a good plan to go make sure that got out on time. So at the end of the day, it just, it does feel like a very large penalty for the distraction. And if we did check from the now on time, we still would have received it after the same day, January 3rd. So I don't know, you know, if there's any flexibility to reduce or dismiss this, but again, I'm very sorry, we will, this will not happen again. And anything you can do without, it didn't go straight back to the community and, you know, help our whole community there.
Are there any questions from any commissioners or any comments? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, and thank you for joining us by phone. There was something that caught me very curiously, when you said that you didn't, part of the reason why you did not write a check or a check was not written on December 29th... 29th, was because the controller was unavailable to do that, that they were out. And I guess my question is, had the Medicare payment come on time, would the controller still have been out, and would a check have been written? I'm sorry, it was a very curious thing that I heard, so I just want to make sure I heard that correctly.
Yeah, she would have paid it online.
I see. Okay, thanks.
She ultimately did pay it online on January 3rd.
I see.
In that case, she locked into the...
I see. Well, I might also go ahead, since I do have the microphone, I'll take... You had the last one, I'll take this one. So, one of the issues that we have, and I'm sure either the Collector or someone on our staff may have told you, what you asked for, I understand why, and I can certainly understand with the amount that you are asking for, why you would come to us. Our issue, though, is that state law requires us to be certain that the issue, if there is one, is one of the counties. We have to be able to know that if there has been a mistake, that the mistake has been done by us. Unfortunately, just looking and hearing the narrative and reading the narrative, it suggests that those issues, however unfortunate, did not, or their origin was not from us or the county per se. So, that is our struggle, and I'm not sure I've heard an issue that is of the county's making. I understand the issue and why you're in front of us, but I also want to communicate to you that that is the burden that we have to be able to cross, is to see whether or not the issue is of our making or the county's making, and I, from what I have heard, I don't think that is the case, unless there's a detail that I've missed.
Well, I guess it, I don't know what it means, if it helps or not, but it looks like there were the return to gender notice that occurred there. It's hard timing, you know, where it happens, and I'm not entirely sure that the payer is Mark Hopen. See, ultimately, I'm the type of person where if I mess up, I'm taking full responsibility, and so I wanted to square it, you know, I mean, I'm, this is my fault. If it's possible, you know, he does have a looking to try and help in the event of something he's trying to adopt, you know, there, it looks like the tax payment, it looks like there's a Mark Hopen with a Kansas City address listed as the payer for GGCC. And I don't, I'm known as Mark Hopen, you know, Mark Reesman, and I don't recognize the visit address. We did have an emergency change as well, but even with the whole counters, I can't reach him as a person or, I'm sorry, that.
I see. Okay, well, I'm sure we can discuss that with our staff, but I appreciate the answers to my questions, thank you very much.
Commissioner Johnson?
Mr. Reesman, I'd just like to add on to that, this is Jay Johnson, one of the commissioners. I also want to thank you and the Grand Royale for paying what I think actually are astronomical property taxes, and for people who are not following along on agenda, who don't realize that the penalty that you have to pay, that you're contesting to deny, the penalties and the fees on your property, the penalties alone are $12,477. That's the penalty alone that you're going to have to pay for this. I think it's astronomical, I don't think it's fair, but like my colleague just said, we don't control that, because it's not a fault of ours on the county. Bottom line is, the button was pushed on January 3rd to send the money over from your bank, and so that wasn't a mistake on the county's part, so we are legally can't change that, unfortunately. So I don't know of any other way around this that we have to waive these fees for you, so I don't think we'll be able to... Go ahead.
Is there a way to reduce the fees?
We don't have that authority to do that, unfortunately, else we would, I would. I'd put a motion before right now to do that, but we don't. And although we'd like to make some changes at the state level, we're not at the state level, so right now, it's, that can't happen, so I apologize for that, and again, I thank you for paying your taxes, but our hands are tied on this one unfortunately, because the mistake wasn't made at the county level.
I agree with you, that. I do have one more idea, and it's probably not going anywhere, but is it possible to prorate the interest because it was only three days late each day of the four thirty days?
Prorate the interest because of the amount of time it was late, that's a question for staff, and we're, I'm looking over now, hopefully we can get an answer for that. The question was, can they prorate the penalties because of the, or the interest, because of how late? I guess you're saying it was three days, when it really was two, or something like that? Go ahead, you want to take it over to her?
Barbara O'Reilly Collector, no, this is per state statute, at the end of the year, December 31st at midnight, the penalty and interest starts at the beginning of each month, and this is state statute.
And so, so his question is, so that's, so he's being charged for, what, three days?
Yes.
And I think he's saying that it was only two? I don't know if that's true or not.
But like, on December the 31st, that's when the penalty interest starts, at midnight. The first day of January.
So January 1st is one day, January 2nd is two.
It's the same thing, it's the whole month of January.
Oh, the whole month.
That's the whole month, that's, right.
Mr. Reesman, did you understand what was just said? Because I just now got schooled on that. It's the whole month, it doesn't matter if it's one day or two days, or five days.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that sounds fair, doesn't it? Again, we don't control that, and I think it's ridiculous, I think, we all think it's ridiculous, but nonetheless, so your point about being able to prorate that, we can't do that either unfortunately. That was a good suggestion. I apologize.
Well, if you guys have any other suggestions around the poll here, but I think I know what you're trying to do.
Please proceed.
Sir, this is Barbara O'Reilly Collector again. If you would like, we are taking prepayments, if it would work better with your budget, that way you guesstimate what your taxes will be, and you can send us an amount, and with the parcel number that you would like it applied to, and we'll apply it, and at the end of the year, we take that off before we send your bill, and that might help.
Yeah, I mean, you know, for next year, I'm not worried about it, it is good to know that we can do that, certainly run it by the owners, but, you know, for right here and now, and I know we've already paid the penalty, and so, you know, if there are any ideas for that, typically at state level, you know, I'm wanting to try that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other comments from staff? Are there any questions or comments from any of the commissioners? Sir, if you'd like to make any kind of submission, summation of your case, then I will be entertaining a motion related to your issue. Please proceed. If you'd like to go ahead and just, you know, kind of give us a summation of why you're appealing your interest in penalties.
Sure, yeah, I'm appealing because of some unforeseen circumstances and that caused us to pay three days late, and so we're just trying to correct the mistake.
Thank you. Excuse me, with that, is there a motion related to 2024-99, Commissioner Johnson?
Move to approve 2024-99 with the box marked "denies" the request.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-99 with the box marked "denied." Is there any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes six-zero.
Thank you, sir, I apologize that we could not be more helpful on this, but as has been pointed out, state law rather ties our hands on this issue, so we very much appreciate you coming in and making your case, so thank you very much.
Thank you all for continuing.
Thank you. Next issue on our regular agenda is 2024-100, Administrator?
Resolution 2024-100 is a request for waiver of fees, interest, penalties, and taxes due to county error from Vernon and Wilma Claxton, and I believe the Claxtons are here in the audience and can present to the commission.
If the applicants would like to come forward, please, and when you come up to the microphone, make sure the green light is on, state your names, and then proceed with your comments.
My name is Will McClaxton.
I'm Vernon Claxton.
And we're here on our interest and penalty on our taxes. It's come to, it was, we've been chasing this forever, from our bank, a check fraud, which we've never, ever heard of, I guess we don't get out, our check was washed, is what the bank said. From the bank statement, I don't tell you who it was made out to, in that month, I only wrote one check, and it was exact amount of our taxes that were due, and it showed the check went through our bank account. Well, what, two, three weeks ago, we got, finally got a thing saying we owed taxes, and I said, "It can't be, it went through the bank." Okay, so, this is about our fifth time up here, but, and the bank, we would, we come up here to see what was going on, they said, "No, we never got it," so I had to go to the bank and get a copy of the check that went through, it's made out to some girl's name, and for love and money, I don't know why the bank can't trace what bank they sent it to. I don't understand this whole process. They're the ones that transferred the money to this girl's account, but for some reason, we had to do 20 papers and fraud line for the bank. Then they told us to go to the police department, and I'm trying to figure out why the, we had to go to the police department and trace down, either it was put, we mail, we usually stick our mail in the mailbox, so it was in the mailbox, so either a complete stranger come and took it out when we put it in there, postman, somebody at the post office, or somebody at the collector's office, that's the three people that would have touched that, to get a hold to wipe out the check and to pay it. They said it was put into an online banking, our bank said that. They're in the process, we had to close our bank account, go to social security, get all that, we had to retransfer all of our retirement funds, and this has just been a total nightmare. I did not know this kind of stuff went on, and we did go ahead and come up and pay everything. The third attempt, first time, your internet was down, so I couldn't pay it then, and then I didn't know you couldn't pay with a charge card without paying a big fee. We don't usually use our charge card, that's in case of emergency, but we did go ahead and pay everything. We just don't think that we should have to pay the interest and the penalty. We'd done everything we possibly can, and now we're waiting for the bank, but I don't understand why the bank don't go after these people.
Excuse me, Commissioner Johnson?
Sure. I did that.
Yeah, I'm an easy target on that stuff. There you are.
Okay, sorry about that, thank you, sir. So, Mr. and Mrs. Claxton, thank you for coming in here, I apologize you have to go through this, but just so I'm following this right, you actually put your check in your mailbox out at your, at the curb, I'm assuming?
Yes. Well, right in front of our house.
In front of your house?
We always mail our mail that way, when I pay bills, now, my daughter taught me how to pay online, thank God.
But you put it on the mailbox that the mail delivers to and takes from?
Yes, we've always done that.
And you did that on December 6th, three weeks before it's due?
Oh, yes.
And your bank even told you the check was washed, which means that somebody got your check out of the mailbox, and essentially just...
Yes, somewhere along the line of that envelope being processed, somebody could...
And a washed check just means that somebody erased your information and put what they wanted on that check.
They left the exact amount of the taxes and my name.
Yeah, there's nothing more you could have done, I don't think, to pay your taxes on time. To me, this is an issue that, even though it's not the county's fault per se, this is one of those post office things where, hey, that's how the post office works, that's a post office box that is considered the post office official mailing, nobody else is allowed to put things in except the post office, or take things out except the post office. I think this is one of those things, maybe a stretch, but I'm, to me, I'm one that's willing to waive this one based on that, and blame it on the post office, if nothing else.
I know, what do you, we've always paid on time, we've never done any of this.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yeah, I'm with Commissioner Johnson. You did everything right, and you've probably done it this way, always.
Always.
You know, but unfortunately, in today's world, there's so many people out there that are, just have no morals, no scruples, nothing, and they're going to take money from anybody. Just out of curiosity, did the bank reimburse you for your money?
Not yet. They still have an envelope like this full of paperwork that, you know, and they asked, you know, like, "Do we want to prosecute?" I said, "Yeah, if you catch them, yes, we want to prosecute, we don't want nobody stealing our checks."
Yeah, and it's not like, you know, you've been, you've been careless with your, the money or your checks in the past, so yeah, that's extremely unfortunate. I would ask our county councillor, have we got a gray area here, in your opinion, or how do you feel? That's what we pay the big bucks for, you have to make that kind of a decision.
Statute says, count, there has to be a county error.
I beg your pardon, sir?
Statute says there has to be a county error, and there appears to be no allegation of a county error in this one.
Okay. So, you're saying that because we were late, it would have to be because you guys messed up in the mailing or something? Well, yeah, and this is not something that we want.
Yeah, you get me? It's not something we like to do. Here's the problem, it's a state statute, a state law. They tell us that unless the county, and that's all counties, not just us, that if the county makes a mistake, you reimburse. There have been some times where the post off...
But we still have to pay the penalty.
Yeah, I mean, that's what he's saying, the legal opinion is.
So the world can know.
Not because we want to, but if we do it, we're going against the law, frankly. It's a ridiculous law, we're trying to get it changed, but we don't have it changed right now.
It isn't worth getting a lawyer to pursue it, but it is worth getting it, like, tell Channel 4, this can happen to people.
Yeah, no.
We, I guess we live too sheltered of a life.
Well, and, yeah.
Whether it was, it wasn't our mistake because we paid it.
Right.
And it wasn't you guys' mistake at all.
We're not done yet, more people are going to talk.
So, you know.
Yeah, you know, I'll do, I'll, like I say, I'm asking the lawyer, because I don't want to do something illegal, and in past experiences, what has happened, like, people will take their stuff to the post office on, say, the 28th, and then the post office will tell them, "Well, we didn't postmark them until," you know.
Right, you might be running late, that's like giving your taxes, I understand that part.
Right, right, yeah, and if that happens, the post office will give people a letter to bring to us, and then we can go ahead and say, "Okay, okay, we're going to take the penalty back." This is a whole different kettle of fish, so I don't know how we'll, how this... how we'll, how this will be resolved, but-
I, I don't either.
Yeah, I mean, I-
To let the world know.
Yeah. I feel bad about it, that's for darn sure, but whether or not we can get by with it, I don't know.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yeah. Thank you for being here. Very sorry that this has happened to you. My parents, a couple of years ago, had a check stolen out of their mailbox and had it washed, had to go through the same process that y'all are going through. Well, normally, state statute would say that the county has to be at fault. There is also an implication in the state statute, Commissioner Johnson has read it to us before, that in order to assess the penalties and fees, the taxpayer must have not paid their taxes on time. In your case, you did pay your taxes on time. You absolutely did. I have no reservation whatsoever supporting waiving the penalties and interest for you. I think it's entirely defensible, and I'll make the motion right now to approve 2024-105, excuse me, 100 with the-
100, yes.
Box marked approve.
Okay. Commissioner Carpenter has made the motion that 2024-100 be approved with the box indicated approved. We will, of course, with the motion on the floor, but we will still continue discussion. Do you have any other remarks before I move on? Oh, I'm sorry. Let me get you on there. There you are.
Again, sorry you've had to go through this. And I just want to say, you know, for fellow commissioners, you know, I think we should be very judicious in the way we handle these. For example, on that last one, I had no sympathy whatsoever for the, for the late payment. And even if state law did give us more latitude, I still wouldn't have supported issuing a waiver on the last one. On this one, it's night and day difference. You did everything absolutely correct. You've been the victims of a, of a crime, and the idea that we would add penalties and interest to your victim status as a fraud victims, I think is outrageous, and I think we should all vote to waive the interest and penalties. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you. My colleague had so much thunder, he stole mine, too. But I will support that motion, and I'll do it for two reasons. One is, you know, it strikes me that when one is a victim of a crime, they should not be further punished for that crime that they, that they did not commit. You did everything that you're supposed to do. I think that's pretty clear. It also strikes me that, you know, I, I do get nervous in some of these things when, when something goes through that we end up having to pay a penalty for. In this case, and I'll just ask the county administrator, you know, there, there was, through this whole episode, there was not a payment that was made that the bank said, or charged us a fee for, correct?
That is correct.
Right.
Right, because we never received the check to put through our bank to have it come back. So-
Right.
We had no bad check cost to the county.
Right. Those sorts of things usually kind of get me, get me jumpy. But in this case, that didn't happen because the first was stolen, and then once you knew that, then you went ahead and paid with penalties and all. So, so I'm supportive of that motion. I will vote for that motion. I too am, want to express my regrets that you've had to go through this experience. And I do appreciate the county councillor, his position, and that is his position that he must take. But I also, I think, as we've talked about these sorts of issues before, it is funny what appears in other areas of state law. And as, as my colleague referred to, when we really had a robust discussion about this, I, I just wonder if anyone from the state is, who may be watching tonight, is going to say, doggone it, I'm going to bring action against Clay County for dealing this in this manner. I kind of doubt that's going to be the case. So, so I will certainly vote to support you. And I'm sorry you're experiencing what you're experiencing and the extra work you're having to do, and I appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Withington?
I, I support Commissioner Carpenter's motion. I, you know, I, looking through this, it looks like you guys made every attempt to pay your taxes on time. So I don't want to penalize you guys because you guys were victims of fraud either. So, yeah, I wholeheartedly support waiving your interest and penalties.
Thank you.
I'd like to go ahead and weigh in on this one as well. It seems to me that you are the victims of a crime, and for the county to victimize you a second time is unconscionable. Our job here is obviously to follow the law as best we can. I think it's a reasonable interpretation to say that this law was passed, and I'm making a stretch here, but this law was passed, did not contemplate a criminal act being visited upon the taxpayer. It strikes me as not very different if you were to come up here to pay your taxes, and you had your check in your purse, and somebody stole your purse and ran off with it, causing you to be late. So this is a result of a crime. I think the law presupposes that a criminal act has not been already created, and we're talking about a criminal act that is far in excess of, we're talking about a violent crime of theft as opposed to just missing a deadline. So it seems to me that what we need to do is to exercise some, I think, reasonable latitude in this case, and I agree with what appears to be the consensus of the commission. And I would go further and just mention to you, I hadn't mentioned it up to this point, but this commission has unanimously called upon our state government to allow us more latitude, and this is clearly a case where that latitude is, I think, required and appropriate. This is also an extension of us communicating to our state government that this law is, at least in this particular case, being applied, or could potentially be applied unjustly, and that we will not participate in that particular action. So with that, are there any further comments from the commission? Do you guys have any closing comments before we, before I recognize Commissioner Carpenter to close?
I want to thank you for listening to our case. I'm just trying to figure out how the police are going to trace it, what they're going to do. I would love to know the knowledge of, happen to go back and see the stop crimes like this, especially on elderly people, I mean retired people.
Yes, I agree with you. Commissioner Carpenter, if there are no other comments, I will go to you for any closing comments and to close. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Resolution 2024-105 is approve the use of the Rooney Justice Center parking lot for an electronic recycling event provided by Midwest Recycling Center through a partnership with Mid-America Regional Council. Deputy County Administrator Kuntz is here to talk about the project.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donna Kuntz, Deputy County Administrator. And I'm sorry, I don't know how Barbara's been up here like twice, but someone is making sure we all have smiles on our faces today, and there is random Easter eggs down the hallway. And I just don't know how she's managed to not get this candy. So she's got more willpower than obviously I have. So the county partners with Mid-America Regional Council to offer our citizens access to household hazardous waste disposal. And this year, Mid-America Regional Council is partnering with Midwest Recycle Center to go in various areas in our community to hold an electronic waste recycling program. These programs at this time are scheduled September 7th in Lawson, September 21st in Smithville, October 12th in Excelsior Springs, and October 28th in Kearney. And we are seeking to host one of these at our Rooney Justice Center parking lot on October 19th. This event would be from 9:00 to 12:00. They take things, laptops, mice, old computers. Now, there are certain items, older TVs and things that have tubes, if you brought a refrigerator, they had free on. There are some items that have nominal fees to dispose of them. The majority of items are free. When this event gets closer to the time, we will be posting out on our website and the list of prices. The Midwest Recycling Group provides all the labor to do this. They handle all the collecting of the money. They don't ask for any staff time to do this. They just need an area to perform the services.
Thank you. I'm glad that we are participating in this partnership. I think anybody who has any kind of a household understands that there are times when these items can run their useful life, and the ability to dispose of them safely and responsibly is certainly something that I'm glad to see that we are given the opportunity for our citizens to participate in this. Commissioner Johnson?
Moving to approve 2024-105.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2024-105. Further discussion? Commissioner Wagner, did you have anything? Are there any other commissioners who would like to make comment before we go forward? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Withington?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagner?
Aye.
Motion passes six zero.
Good evening. Deetta Jacobs, Administrative Services Officer. And you might notice it's a little bit different than what, what was on the agenda as far as a senior, or a Senate Bill 190, senior tax credit. We're looking at doing a little bit of rebranding, and that's in an effort to cut down on confusion, because there are some individuals that believe it's a property tax break relief credit on all of their taxes and not just their real estate. So by putting that clearly in the name of this program and branding it in that way, it's our desire and hope that we cut down on some of the confusion and frustration of our citizens. So we'd like to move forward with this type of branding with it saying a senior real estate property tax relief program. At the current time, we are developing an application to be utilized for individuals who meet the eligibility. We are also reviewing software to evaluate it for the ability to manage those applications and the supporting documents that are going to be required to prove the eligibility. We're researching methods to make the application process user-friendly, because not all of our seniors are computer literate or even want to be on the computer. So we're looking at different methods that will help us reach those individuals that will really benefit by this program. We're reviewing the applications that are being used by the other counties to make sure that we gather all of the information and evaluate, well, why did they ask for that? Is this something that we need to ask for? And to really make sure that we do this the right way. We are also looking at the tax processing software so that we can make sure that we get it right. We are in discussions with our current tax processing vendor to see if they're able to make the calculations necessary to provide a valid and accurate tax bill. We're also evaluating other software vendors. This is a very complicated process on the backend because there are a lot of variables. We're collaborating with other counties on the taxing software that they utilize and how we might be able to benefit from some of the lessons that they're learning. We plan to have a very robust communication plan that begins in the fourth quarter of 2024. And the reason that we're going to do it in the last quarter of 2024 is to really try and reach the people right before the applications are due. There's a lot of confusion. There are some folks who think that the applications are accepted right now, and we really want them to, to get the message out, do an educational campaign, and reach these, these individuals. We'll use a variety of methods to do that, as indicated, social media, standard media, public service announcements, and going to outside of, of the administration and to go outs to sites and to visit with organizations and senior groups. Just again, so we can reach as many people as possible. The enrollment will begin in January of 2025. We are currently evaluating staffing needs for that, for both onsite and offsite events. We are evaluating the possibility of adding staff to the collector's office in this summer, June or July, adding them so that they can get a good foothold on what it is that's needed in the collector's office, since we're going to be taking checks in December at the counter. And then those people will then be available in January through March. They'll have a good understanding of what the collector's responsibilities are, and then they can help us accept those applications. So we are looking forward to what staffing needs might be out there. Offsite, convenient location, right? Is parking accessible? Is a building accessible? Is there adequate parking? And is it convenient? So if we evaluate where our seniors are, then we can look at the different sites that might be necessary throughout the county to best make it accessible. There is current pending legislation. The two pieces of legislation that seem to be moving forward the most are Senate Bill 756 and House Bill 2432. The biggest difference between those two is that the House bill indicates that the taxes, all taxes have to be paid. They can't have any delinquent taxes to participate in the program. And it assures that there is no hindrance from a person appealing their assessment, their assessed value. So that's the biggest difference between those two. They are both indicating that the age should be 62 without social security retirement requirement. They also indicate that if the tax goes down, that it will stay down. It will not come back up, which is what our ordinance says. It also addresses occasions of new construction or improvements, and both of them, and both of them address if a piece of property is annexed, and what that would mean for the taxing liability and how that would change it. I also included two Senate joint resolutions. Those are, those are legislation that will go on the ballot. SJR 26 will be on this Fall's ballot, and it talks about the property exemption, or the tax exemption for care of children. So that is coming back, coming up this November, and it will be on the ballot as a constitutional amendment. 58 is a constitutional amendment that talks about the 100% permanent disability rate of a veteran, and it would exempt them from property taxes and personal property. It exempt them from taxes. So I just wanted to make you aware that we are keeping an eye on those things as well. We are hoping that individuals will go to our county website, claycountymo.gov, the residents tab, senior tax, type in in the search, senior tax relief, and then there's a button that says click here. There's a form that they can fill out to ask a question, and it'll come to staff to be answered, and they're, they can sign up for notifications as we move forward in this process. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Before we get into the discussion, I want to commend this commission for passing the, the ordinance that we did pass, particularly Commissioner Lawson, who spearheaded the effort. When you talk about collaborating with our fellow counties, we met, Commissioner Lawson and I met with Commissioner from Platt County talking about how we can go forward with this, with this initiative. Commissioner Wagner and I were down in Jefferson City on a couple of occasions, trying to promote this, this kind of legislation particularly. And they are both. House Bill 2432 was passed out of committee and sent to the Senate on Tuesday. And I believe the Senate bill from Senator Luke Demire on April 3rd, there's a hearing scheduled in the House Special Committee on Property Tax Reform at noon or upon morning recess in House Room 3, Hearing Room 3. So this commission, I think, has done a great job, and that does not, you know, I don't want to neglect any of the efforts that any of our other commissioners have made, because I'm sure they've all reached out at various times when possible to promote this with our delegation from Jefferson City and the legislature at large. our delegation from Jefferson City and the legislature at large, because the idea that 62 years old as opposed to the other requirement means that, and it's not lost on anyone here, and like I say, this is, this is something that we as a commission came to the conclusion of, and I think rightly so, and that is, a senior should not be denied this because they were their retired teacher or some other category. So I am glad to see that the state is following the lead of Clay County on this and doing the right thing. Perhaps we can do that in some other issues like property taxes and get similar results. But I just want to give that quick update. Thank you for this, to the staff for putting this together. This is not, it's easy to say difficult to implement, and I think sometimes it's easy to just, you know, some of us as policymakers to say, staff, just go do this, not a big deal. It is a big deal. I want to thank staff from the administrator all the way through the entire staff for putting together and in process still working on something that will be user-friendly for our citizens, obviously with seniors, me being one myself, making it simple is greatly appreciated. With that, Commissioner Lawson, you are recognized.
Just a couple of questions for you, and thank you so much. This is really great, and the stuff online is fantastic. The only thing I would say is that seniors, a lot of seniors are not real literate on the computer, but they can always call and ask questions, so no big deal. When we were in meetings, the little redheaded girl said, I apologize for not remembering her name, I am sorry, she's so smart. But she mentioned that we were going to get the software, they were going to be able to upgrade for free. Has that changed?
If we still utilize our current vendor, that may still be on the table, I'm uncertain, and they have to tell us that they are capable of doing this.
Okay, okay, well, that's something to think about. And something that I've been doing, and maybe we can work together on this, I'm going out to the senior groups, to the homes, I mean, not the homes, but you know what I mean, retirement places, and talking to them about that. I met with, Victor Hurlbert's been going with me, and he's really great about, you know, getting into the nitty-gritty if they have questions. But I've been trying to do that, so I've been going out, sitting down with these groups as they have lunch or whatever, and going over what they're going to see down the road. And I've told them all, things might change, you know, but for the most part, this is the way it is. This is about when you're going to get it. When you get that form, get it filled out and get it back to us. If they have trouble, one of the things I mentioned to the gal at Smithville, you know, when the time comes that those forms come out, and I'd be happy to do it or, you know, and have maybe a group of us do it. If we could go out to the, not the retirement homes, but the community centers, senior community centers, and sit down with them, and maybe if they have trouble, we can say, we'll be here for lunch that day, and then we can help them fill it out. So just food for thought if we want to do that. And I, I'm with Jerry, I mean, I appreciate everything that everybody did to help us get this through. We don't want to forget that along with all of the staff, which was wonderful, that we also had our assessor, and we had Victor on that with us, and we had the assessor's lawyer helping us as well as our own lawyer. So we really, it was a team effort all the way.
And it still is.
And we don't want to forget those other office holders that were so key in getting this whole thing done. So anyway, people appreciate it so much. Those seniors were thrilled, you know, and it made me feel so good that we were able to get this finished, and thank you very much for doing this. Great, great job.
And we are planning to, to visit those seniors. We just have to get, we have to get it organized and...
Okay, sounds good.
Well, and if I could interject, not only upfront during the communication plan, but during the enrollment period when Deetta had on the slide, you know, offsite, the intent is, which we are discussing, is dates and times, we will be out with computers, we have to have a scanner because there's documents that have to be uploaded. So we're looking about how do we get mobile scanners and how do we be onsite at different locations throughout the county with an advertised date to, you know, sort of like there are groups that help seniors do their taxes. So we are anticipating also trying to incorporate that into the enrollment period, especially the first couple of years, when we expect a huge influx of applicants to participate in the program.
Well, and thank you so much. And what I'll do as I go out to those places, I'll find out what day they have their biggest crowds, and then I'll give that back to y'all, and that might help when you do that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lawson. By the way, thank you for mentioning the other office holders. One that we left out is Treasurer Nance was also quite involved. Yeah, Treasurer, excuse me, Treasurer Nance is played a very, yeah, I don't believe I'm going to attempt that. With that, Commissioner Johnson, you are next to be recognized.
Thank you, sir. So I asked for this update last week, and I appreciate this happened so fast. I certainly didn't mean to put extra work on staff, I'm sensitive for that, but I think this is very important because I do understand that there is a ton of work, as you mentioned on the backside, you know, behind the scenes that staff has to do. It's easy for us to say, yeah, let's do this, but you guys got to make it happen. And obviously, my concern is, you know, we're a quarter of the way through the year now, that you guys have the, the resources and the ability to get this done and get this done on time so we have time to work out the bugs and the kinks as much as we can. There's going to be, there's going to be bugs in the system no matter what, but the more that we can work those out ahead of time and test runs and all that kind of stuff, I think the better. I really like the title you put on this, Senior's Real Estate Property Tax Relief Program. I think that makes a lot more sense and makes a little bit more clear to people what we're talking about, so I really appreciate that. But yeah, my biggest concern is, hey, are we, are we going to be able to get this done? Are we moving on this quick enough? And bottom line, can we, can we work through this and get it done far enough ahead of time so we have time to work out the bugs and that kind of system? That's, that's really what I'm pushing for, and that's really why I asked for, for this, and obviously, it sounds like you guys are on it. And the more that the public is aware of that through even these presentations, I appreciate it. So thank you very much for this and, and good luck with this.
Well, your, your concerns are ours as well, because we want to do it well, and we want to do it right. And yes, we have been talking about this in the background, and I don't know if you all know, St. Charles County has implemented theirs. They started taking applications on March 1st, and in the first six business days, they took 4,600 applications, and they're anticipating 38,000. So if we go by their population, that 38,000 is 9.27% of their population, and our auditor was guessing that our senior population was 15.4% of our 255,518 people as of 2021, which would equate to 39,350. So yes, sir, we are, we're doing, we're doing a lot in the background. A duck on the water will feed her scrambling underneath.
Commissioner, oh, yes.
Just one quick thing.
Hold on, let me go ahead and push your button. Okay, go right ahead, Commissioner Lawson.
The only thing, when he was doing that, the bigger percentage were seniors, and then seniors that owned their home, he thought it was around 10, 11%. So it might be a little bit less than, you know, what they experienced.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
True. Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, and I want to echo my colleagues' thanks. It's, it is a lot of work, and it has been a lot of work, and I appreciate it. The one thing we kind of, kind of went over, and I know, this is, this is rather redundant, but I feel like for those who may be watching, it bears some repeating, especially if St. Charles County is already accepting. The reason why we are really doing a fourth quarter execution into 2025 is partially because this is not a reassessment year. So if you want to just sort of speak to that kind of, that kind of logic so that those who are watching kind of understand the method to our, not madness, but our process, that would be great. Thank you.
Exactly. The commission was able to provide us a little bit of extra time to do exactly what Commissioner Johnson had asked, and that is to figure it out, test it, and make sure we're doing it properly. And it would not negatively impact the citizens as much because it is not an assessment year. Their tax rate should be essentially, I don't, I don't want to use the word same, should be very similar to what it is in 2023 because the assessed value will not change. So that's why, it's my understanding, the commission chose to make it effective in 2025, to give us that opportunity to do it right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would also point out that any legislation, the legislation you're talking about, in the absence of an emergency clause, would not really take effect until August 30th. So we would have that, this way it gives us a chance to incorporate any potential changes that the law may throw at us.
Yes.
With that, Commissioner Withington?
I just want to say thanks for putting this together. I have probably a dozen or so people that reach out to me every week, so this is great information, so thank you.
You're welcome. I do, I did put handouts on each of your stations. I have that in electronic format. If you would like that to be sent to you, and you can pass it out, make copies, and then the date that it's updated is at the bottom. And as we continue to get questions, we will update the website, the FAQs, the questions and answers, so that more people can feel comfortable with how this process is moving forward.
Before we leave the discussion, I want to give Commissioner Lawson a chance, since it's your initiative, since you are leading the charge on this. If you have any closing comments for our, for our discussion, then we will end this discussion unless there's some further comment to be made. Commissioner Lawson?
No, the only thing I want to say is, you know, you and Jay both served on that committee and backed me all the way, and everybody worked together. It was, it was kind of a neat thing. We had all the different departments, we had all our wonderful staff, and everybody pulled together to get this thing pushed through. So, you know, the only thing I'd say is I'm just pleased as I can be, as we all are, because we all voted for it. And, and then the fact that you've taken the ball and run with it, boy, that's, that's great. It sounds like you guys are, are getting it all organized, so this thing will go. I'd love to see it just go through and be smooth. I know nothing ever does, but, but, but I appreciate all the work you've put into this.
And it truly is a team effort.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Very well. If there are no further comments, then we will go ahead and end this discussion and move on to the next item on our agenda, which would be county administrator comments.
Just one item, and that is that the commission's next meeting is next Thursday, hard to believe, April 4th, here in the chambers at 6 o'clock.
Very well. Now that brings us to commissioner comments. Start with Commissioner Wagner. Randomly so, but there you are. Your number came up.
Well, then my random comment will be, for those who celebrated, Happy Easter. And for those kids who go looking for Easter eggs, I hope you get a lot and you get a bellyache by the end of the day. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Lawson?
I, I have to say something. I'm so excited. I am so thankful for the citizens that we've got in this county, for them having the faith that they had in all of us. Nobody filed against us. Think about that. I'll bet you a dollar to a donut, this is the first time this has ever happened, where all of the, those people running did not have someone filing. They ran, we were unopposed. To me, that says volumes about the job we've done. If you think about what we've done in one year, you know, we, we've got the 190, God, I'm so happy with that. We got the 911 cared for, where we can now have quick response and, you know, have adequate people at the center, the control center, and, you know, people don't have to worry when they pick up their cell phone and dial that they're going to get 911. And, and I'm so proud of that. I'm proud of the fact that we made some great changes in our planning and zoning, and that we moved that along for people a little bit more quickly than we did before. Just because it's always the way we've done it doesn't mean it has to stay that way, and Jay pointed that out very strongly. And, and we've been able to do a lot of that kind of thing, and I think that's great. Probably the most important thing, I think, that we've done is that we put prayer back before we, we all sit down and, and do business. We need that guidance always, whether it's our rabbis or whoever it is that come in and, and give us that blessing at the beginning. It's, it is a blessing. You know, I, I'm not going to change the way I do things. I know I've got a big mouth, and I know I'm always pushing something, but that is exactly why I got elected, why we all got elected. And when we feel strongly about something, we speak out about it, and I'm not going to change the way I am. There's probably people that say, oh, hell, another four years of her, but, but I don't really care because that's what the folks in Clay County wanted. They wanted me, they wanted Johnny, they, they wanted the beautiful Megan back, they wanted Wild Man here back, and, and I think that that says a lot about the way we work together, and the fact that we can just argue like fools, but when it's over, there's no malice in our hearts. You know, we've just done what we had to do for the situation. You know, some of us made six figures in the past, in our past lives, and, and that was wonderful. All the stuff that I may have sold, all the money that I may have made, all of that doesn't compare to helping that lady and gentleman like we did this evening, you know, or, or getting the bill for the seniors passed. It's such a blessed reward, gosh, just great. So, so thankful for all of you. I think you're wonderful to deal with. You know, when I, when, when I refiled, I was just running around the house like a crazy woman, and, and then I just stopped, and I thought, you know, I'm going to put this in God's hands. If it works, it works. If it doesn't, it doesn't. And I did it, and I did it for all of us. I said, we just, you know, protect us all, make it all good for all of us, and it did. So going forward, God bless you all. I'm happy to have you back, and all of us together, like one big happy little family. So thank you, the people of Clay County, and good luck to all of us in the future.
Commissioner Withington?
Well, I don't know how to follow that. I was going to make a joke about you all being stuck with me for another four years. So Happy Easter to everybody, and today's opening day, and my favorite day of the year.
Did they win?
Well, hold on, let me finish.
Oh.
The Royals started off this year where they left off last year losing, so, but, yeah, and I don't know, Joanne saw me, I posted this on Facebook, but this is a little baseball history of Clay County. So a gentleman that you're friends with and that my grandfather was friends with, his name is Lou Kraus, he passed away in 2017. He lived in Holt. He played for the Kansas City Athletics, but he was...
No, he, he passed away, oh, are you talking about Lou Kraus?
Yeah.
Yeah, he just passed away two years ago.
Okay, two years ago. So he was, he played for the, he played for several teams, but he played for the Kansas City Athletics. He pitched the first game ever for the Oakland A's at Oakland Coliseum, and then two years later, he pitched the very first game for the Milwaukee Brewers. So that's a little Clay County baseball history.
Commissioner Carpenter, we'll go with you. I did, well, I saw you were waiting, and I saw you were sleeping, so I thought I'd shake it up. Commissioner Carpenter, there you go.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to agree with Commissioner Lawson's observations, and want to say I'm grateful to serve in this capacity with y'all and everybody in the room, everybody with Clay County that makes the government go. It's a, it's a real honor to get to do this and afford to do it for another four years with y'all, and hope everybody has a good Easter, and, yeah.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. No, I'll just say that I'm very excited to serve another four years with you all as well. I'll sit over here quietly, causing my own little, little trouble. I want to wish everyone a very happy and blessed Easter this, this coming weekend. And also, you might have noticed that maybe the Easter bunny may have hopped on through here, through the courthouse today, so feel free to, they're safe, they're safe, the Easter bunny popped on by, so.
Commissioner Johnson, now you've got it.
Thank you, sir. So I too want to congratulate those election, election results, or should I say, not even results yet, but to make it clear, four commissioners up here had to run for reelection this year, commissioners Whittington, Lawson, Thompson, and Carpenter. Us three didn't have to. So all of them are unopposed, which means they all won, so congratulations to them. We also have two other positions in our county that ran unopposed, that's our assessor, Tracy Baldwin out there, as well as our sheriff, Will Aiken. So all six positions for the county are unopposed, and you can interpret that a number of different ways. I like to interpret it that, you know, people are happy with the way things are going. And those who've been around for a while have seen the evolution long before I've been here, of what the county's gone through and where we are now, and the rebranding that has been taking place, and I, I think this means that, that indicates that the county as a whole is somewhat happy with it, and I, hopefully, we continue on that, that same path. This also puts all of us now in a four-year cycle. Remember, with the new constitution, some of us came on with a two-year term, or some of them came on a two-year term. So now everyone's on a four-year cycle, but it's staggered. So in two years from now, two and a half years from now, the three of us will be running again, or the three positions will be up for election again, and then these guys got four years to go. So congratulations to you guys, I'm, I'm glad you guys are, are still here. I think, I think we're doing, we're, we're learning to work even better together, and a lot of us that are just learning this job are appreciative of, of those who've been around a little while. I also want to say, and I don't want to offend anybody, but I want to say Happy Easter for those who do believe. It's, it's a special time of year. Today is Monty Thursday, if you know what that is, today's the day of the Last Supper. Tomorrow is Good Friday, which is the day that, that Jesus was crucified, and then certainly Sunday morning is the day that he rose from the dead, for those of us that believe that. I certainly do, and so I want to acknowledge that and wish all of you a very Happy Easter.
Thank you. Just want to make a couple of comments. One is, and correct me if I'm being correct on this, Administrator, but we have a bridge dedication coming up.
Oh, that's right.
On April 3rd, if I understand correctly.
That is correct. The bridge on 148th Street, there is a dedication at 1:30 on April 3rd.
And the reason I bring that up is, we talk a lot about transportation, and we talk about the roads that we, that we have at our, that we have a responsibility for, and I just want to point out that our, the Carl from Highways and the entire crew, Terry and everyone have done, do a great job on keeping our roads in, in repair and safe. Obviously, there's always more room for improvement, but our highway department, I think, has done a stellar job in making sure that we have gotten this rather Herculean task at least somewhat in hand. I wanted to certainly give kudos to the highway folks. The other thing is, once again, I want to join the kind of the, the chorus, maybe it should be in a, in a chorus, I'm not sure, on Easter. Certainly, this is a day of both secular and religious celebration, whichever it is you choose to celebrate, a lot of us are going to be spending it with family, with friends, and certainly, if you are traveling during this holiday season, please travel safely, travel responsibly, and make sure that you take this time to, to really revel in the camaraderie of our friends and family, and make sure that you treasure these moments, because these moments will not come again. With that, I believe we conclude commissioner comments. We are adjourned. Thank you.
If you're going to the city and telling the lunch, I'm just loving it.
So hopefully, that meets you there. Extra colored bags.
Oh, yeah. No, I.